This is for the public to give us their points of view. And I think all of you might have been at the other meeting we had on January twenty seventh. And that's a great question to the board, for the board. There's, there's, and these guys, ladies and guys, and please correct me. There's two major questions. Maybe one is not so major, the height. We've talked about that and, and we've talked about that. But the other one is the square footage. And we're, I don't know that we're on the same page yet of square footage. To give you, we, I couldn't give you a consensus of the board. I couldn't tell you the number. You're right the way you put it. It's all over the board. For different reasons, all of them valid, I think.
Can you make?
Could you make a suggestion on what you feel would be, the square footage that you think would be appropriate?
My suggestion is to go with what your planning board has recommended. They seem to be.
And how much is that?
Well, I believe they recommended eight hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay.
So, I mean, in terms of, they are a solid engineering-focused group. And you have a brand trust there. Why not use them that way?
Okay. So, just so you know, Mrs. Anderson, so with that being said, that would give the potential at eight hundred and fifty square feet. And we don't even know what the boundary is going to be yet. So, I hope we can get to that tonight as well. But at eight hundred and fifty square feet, what we were previously going to have on the north end, and this is just in the north end, in the business district, that would give us a total of another one thousand ninety-eight bedrooms. One thousand ninety-eight more bedrooms. And that's just in the business district. That's not including anything that we already have. So, I have some concerns about the infrastructure. And I was at the planning board meeting the other night. And it was also stated at that meeting that they realized that infrastructure is a problem. In one of the meetings that one of their members attended of state noted that, if we're going to do this big dive into the end of the pool, then we have to think about how much money we're going to spend on the infrastructure that can't handle what we have now. So, that's why I have questions as well, just so you know about the eight hundred and fifty square feet.
I disagree with the comment, if I understood it right, that our infrastructure now needs to be increased. I disagree with that. Our infrastructure can handle what we have now and more. But the question is more, how much more?
I have a follow-up question to that.
Can you just, just state your name, just so I can get it?
Ron Malta, the North End Association.
Can I, let me ask you a question. I live in the north end.
Yeah, North of Cozens. You're in there, so.
I can, I can join?
You're, you're in automatically.
Ah, are there dues?
You should be against a six-story hotel that's going to block your view.
Well, it wouldn't block mine, but it'll block some.
It'll block a lot, all the way up the hill. The zoning thing, I mean, there's lot size. And then there's a unit, apartment, condo unit, housing size. I mean, it's too confusing. It's, I mean, it's, it's so hard to figure out. Why is there a lot size? You could have, a square footage of lot determines how many apartments you can have?
How many units, correct, sir, yes.
And how is, how is, what is the mathematical on that?
Well, so, just previously, at the twenty-five-hundred square feet, if you had a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, and this was what was in the original book, all right? That means you could have four residential units above your commercial space. And a lot of parcels along Main Street are around ten thousand, if not less. So, how many units do we want to put up there?
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't the height and the unit size be determining factors?
Well, that's.
Why, why is the lot size the determining factor? It's very confusing. It's okay for this board to make a change. And, and I'm going to move on from this lot size. I just want to state something here that I saw here about another community. That a lot of, a lot of communities get zoning wrong. And, and keeping the status quo only stagnifies the community. It doesn't allow it to grow and be what it could be or should be. That is determined by the marketplace and the residents. And that's your determining factor here. It's all about residential. Business district will take care of itself, especially with this grand money coming through. You don't have to worry about that. But keeping the same old, same old is not going to allow us to grow. It's not going to allow Highland Falls to grow. And, and one of the things that, that I saw on changings here is, there was on page one oh nine, changing the, the zoning from south, the south of Glen to protect the residential qualities of the residential neighborhood, which currently adjoins these parcels. Well, that's the north end also. Joining parcels are all the way up the hill, up the, up the clights. And they, they are affected by the height. And it, you know, if you're going to make that kind of change for Saturday Grove and Villa Parkway, you've got to, you've got to return the, the transition zone between the commercial district and the residential north end to twenty-foot and, and limit the height to forty-five, which I think is long enough. This, the, the, your, your, the status quo is the extra ten feet, which was seemingly written to accommodate one developer.
So, you're in favor, so I just want to make sure my notes are correct. You're, you're in favor of forty feet?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Over forty-five, yeah, that's what it is. But the extra ten feet because accommodate one, one developer, it seems, you know, is, is too, is too much.
So, so, Mr. Malta, just real quick. So, forty-foot building, right? And you're saying a twenty-foot rear yard setback?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know what the shadow cast of a forty-foot building would be? It would be well on, it would be well onto the, onto the.
Sunlight, sunlight also.
Okay.
It's, it's forty-five. Rain tunnels, there's snow accumulation is going to be, there's a lot.
And that's why I'm.
It's been no issue. Everybody, but everybody, everybody in the community has to make, has to give up a little bit.
Okay.
So that we all, we all have a thriving community, which is what you want.
So, you're, you're in favor of forty-five feet, feet, foot?
I'll go with it.
Huh?
I'll go with it.
With, with a required setback, rear yard setback, right?
Twenty-foot transition zone.
And your square footage? Do you have an opinion on that?
I, I would go with the eight fifty. And I, and I've said before to this board that, that it should be a diversity. If you're going to build a housing units, if you're going to build a, a big block of, of apartments, there should be three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and studios. Don't rent out in this community. Because how many absentee landlords are there here? Does anybody know? How many Airbnbs are in Highland Falls that are all rented this week? Right? And, and you want, you want permanent residents. They're going to spend their money downtown. They're going to send their kids downtown to McDonald's and to spend money and have fun with their, with their friends.
So, so, Mr. Mal, Mr. Malta?
Yes, go ahead.
So, a diversity of the size of the units, one, two, three bedrooms. You're absolutely correct. But I don't know if we can dictate that in the zoning. That will be dictated by the developer. No, no, you know what I'm saying? And I understand what you're saying.
Of course, it's up to the developer and market conditions.
Correct.
I'm just saying, make small changes to the residential parameters to allow for incentive for people to, to make changes. Allow auxiliary dwelling units. Somebody could convert their garage, their two-car garage into a, a, a mother-daughter unit without changing the footprint of the building in that development. Allow, allow a, a, a single-family home to be torn down and duplexes put up with maybe the same square footage. Make some small changes for people to want to do things. Also, you know, a, a big thing that's going on these days in housing is, is the, the small house, right? And, and starter houses. You know, six hundred square foot, a thousand square foot. We have a lot of unconforming lots in the village. You'd need to write up something to make it so that people want to, to say, hey, you know what? They, they, I can do that. But, but right now, it's, it's, you're going to have to buy the land, submit a plan to the planning board. They're going to send it over to the zoning board. I have, have plans also. And it's too much. It's too much. Write it up so that people can say, wow, I can do this. And I'm going to go forward on it. Right now, there's too much of an expense to go forward planning anything. You have to do something about absentee landlords and, you know, is this, is this what you want in this community? Airbnbs and absentee landlords. Things are renting out pretty well. Even though there's a lot of rental signs out there right now on, on the streets. Permanent residents. It is, we have a very unique community here. And it is, it is a great place to live. A lot of people want to live here if we had more housing. And I'll leave it up to everybody else to talk some more. Thanks for listening.
Great.
But I really respect how well that you thought the stuff. So, a question though, and you didn't note it, but what do you think about the required parking for these new units? Should there be required parking for the residential units above Wall Street?
On, in the residential neighborhood?
No, 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 on a business corridor.
On the business corridor?
Yes. And I'll give you a quick example because.
I didn't even make a comment about residential above, above the business. I said the business, the business commercial district will take care of itself if there's more people here to spend the money.
Yeah.
And that's why you want to turn this community around is the residential zoning that has to change so that we have more demand on Main Street.
It was one of the things that was actually noted at one of our previous ones, changing the R-three zone from six thousand to five thousand. I would like to actually see us look at all of the residential zones because I agree that's where the residential higher density should come, not in the business district. But for example, so if we went to eight fifty in the business district down here and say, in front of your house, they don't build that hotel, somebody else comes in, at eight fifty, they could put forty-eight apartments above the commercial space underneath. And that's why I was just asking about parking.
Yeah, I, I, for something like that, they, they can think it out.
Yes.
This board, we're, we're, you know, think this through. Is that, that, yeah, forty-eight units.
That's a lot.
On, between Harry and Drew is, is a lot. And it's going to have to have parking.
A lot of cars. That's why I was just asking the question, sir. Thanks so much.
And one, just one other thing. You know, a lot of, a lot of communities have a, you know, you want to, they have, you got to put some money into the parks fund, right? Well, how about putting it into the infrastructure fund? Consider that.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. What is your name, ma'am?
I have this common, many, Penny Monies.
Oh, I, I.
I know, I get gray.
No, you're not getting grayers. You're different for some reason. Go ahead, Penny.
I, I'm kind of new to this. This is my first appearance at this meeting, but I've heard some chatter. And I'm concerned about building these higher buildings and whether our fire department can take care of the upper floors. And do we have to get the fire department buildings? Do we have to make larger openings for them? Do we have to get new fire trucks? What, do you worry about that kind of stuff?
I, that's been talked about quite a bit, as it should be. And I think a lot will be determined what the fire department's role or needs will be once we decide height and density. So, that's a good ques, that's a fair question.
The other thing that I've been thinking about is who's going to oversee that people do what they, what they're going to do? Because I think that that's kind of some of the problems around here. Some people say they're going to build something and they get that.
Well, the answer to that question is the building department. The town building department.
Who is that?
The building code enforcement officer is Roy, Roy, Phil, Phil Hannawell.
Oh.
Yeah. He does a great job, he does a good job, but he needs help. He's in there all alone.
How can the village help the townsman?
Well, we already do by our town taxes. We pay for two-thirds of his.
How can you get him more help?
Well, the town board has to assign, they have to do that. And we've asked them.
Has the village board asked for that?
According to the town board, he has consulting help and generally is on top of it. That's the answer from the town. There are consultants that work with the building.
Do you have confirmation of that? That, that there is a consultation group that works with the building department?
I think it's an engineering.
The town engineering firm does the building certificates by a, and a licensed building inspector or engineer. You can do it either way in the state of New York. Right now, Mr. Hannawell is certified for code enforcement. So, they have to use the town engineering firm to approve building permits. So, a building inspector can do that, or an engineer, a licensed engineer by the municipality. So, I think while Phil's going through the process of becoming a building inspector or getting certified as one, the town engineering firm is handling that portion. But I wholeheartedly disagree that there's enough code enforcement for one person. I think there's, I think we do have a need for a greater amount. And it's, yes, we've talked to council people, yes, we've talked to supervisor, yes, we get the same response you do. So, it's a consolidated department. It's a consolidated department, so.
So, wouldn't we have some influence to demand more from the company?
Absolutely, absolutely. But I'm, I'm afraid that they may just, the, the company?
From the building department and the consultant department?
According to Mr., Ms. Anderson, you just heard it. The town feels that it's sufficient, so. It's, it's a, it's a, for lack of a better term, a gripe that we continue to try to work with the town in getting them more help. But I recommend anybody just to go down and visit him. I mean, just, you know, he's overwhelmed in the office and you could see it. Nothing against him as a person and, and the job he's doing. He's doing the best he can.
I've called him for work before and him showing up within twenty minutes.
Yeah.
So, I really don't, I personally, as a builder in the village, I don't see that, that he's overwhelmed. He's very responsive and he's on top of it.
Then we shouldn't have any code enforcement issues.
Okay. Let's go back to the public hearing. Any more comments? Yes.
There was a discussion about.
Can you just give your name, I'm sorry?
Oh, Pat Flynn. There was a discussion about the fire department just before. And I believe that, in my opinion, the fire department should be asked before there is a decision on height and requirements, what they can do now and what it's going to cost if you change it, so that can be into the mix. It shouldn't be, we'll, we'll see what they need after because then we may end up with millions of dollars or more cost that was not worked into the budget. But my, my first reason why I'm bringing up the topic is, I'm, I know what was talked about, but I just came, I'm sorry, is parking. There is zero parking to begin with. And if we're going to add all these apartments, if this other building comes into play, where is the, not the one that these guys are trying to do, but the building empty lot here? Where is all parking coming from? And what I'm talking about, I mean, obviously, they'll pay their way with the garbage. That's not a real issue per se. But there's nobody going. Has that been factored in at all?
Well, the fire department, I can answer. Eric Smith's the fire chief. And he's the chairman of the zoning.
Player.
Planning board. And he gives his opinions through that also. So, they are involved. Garbage, did you just say where's it going to go?
No, I said that's not going to be an issue.
Oh, okay, so. Parking, parking, parking's, is, I don't want to call it an issue, but it has to be addressed.
Interesting, one second. So, it's, I'm, you made a couple of good points there, for sure. With the fire department, the apparatus, et cetera. The only other question that should be asked of them as well is the additional training they'll need for the, the higher rises. It's just something, again, these are questions that should be asked.
I've got one, one, Jimmy, you might be able to explain it. When we were at that meeting the other night, there was a discussion on the clay pipes that we still have in, under the Main Street and the whole north end on Main Street. And I was thinking that if the two contractors that are going to be building at this end and everything would make some kind of stipulation that they have to repair the piping underneath, you know, in front of their, their developments. And that would be part of getting the approval, you know, somehow.
It's an attorney thing. And I don't know if we can make a developer do something. Because when I was on the planning board in the past, right? It, it was suggested that you tell a developer they have to do this. And we couldn't tell them that they have to do this. What was very unique, though, when they did the old garden on top of the hill, they actually came in because we told them that we had a problem with our drainage. And they came in the next meeting with a different plan. And they proposed and actually fixed and spent their own money because they knew that might hold it up. Because if the village couldn't fix that drainage, that might slow their project down. And they, out of the goodness of their heart, spent over four hundred thousand dollars redoing that drainage. Now, unfortunately, the building needed to be built. But that's a developer that sees past the hurdles that he may have to overcome and takes care of the problem himself. Now, I don't think we can require somebody to do.
You can't require.
Infrastructure?
You can't require off-site exactments. You can't say, if you don't do this public infrastructure improvement, you're not going to get your approval. It has to be tied directly to the development. Here, or as what you said, it was in their own best interest to make those, those requests, you know, to do that. But the planning board could not have conditioned the approval on those off-site improvements.
Well, what I was thinking is that they were talking about these pipes that were put in a hundred years ago. And some of them are sinking and this and that, and they're clay pipes. And when you and the mayor were talking a minute ago, you didn't bring that up, that part of it. What I'm worried about is, are these developments going to be overwhelmed, that clay pipes?
Yeah. So, right now, we have a ten-inch main four weeks ago or less. That's when we had that break behind the library and we had to fix it. So, that's a ten-inch pipe. And yes, it was a clay pipe. So, they went in and they put some patches on the inside of it for the moment, which are pretty reliable. But to sleeve all of the clay pipes, and then, back to your first question, I'm sorry, but you're absolutely correct. Can that ten-inch pipe handle all of those new units? But Mr. Dunn, you noted, and you were there at the meeting, he said when he was up, up north, that that's one of the things that we need to look at. And that's where you got to start. Because once we start tearing everything down, infrastructure should be the first thing to make sure it would accommodate all of these new units.
All right, let me go, let me go back to the public. Okay, we'll, we'll speak later, yes.
Well, that's, couldn't hear the majority of the conversations happening at the public meeting, which I'm still not sure why we're not at Village Hall or Town Hall where there's a sound system. But my real comment here is, I realize you're using the phone. Hopefully, it's picking up what it's picking up. But why, I know Sean may not have been able to make it. The video camera is very easy just to set up and push play. How come we're not videotaping these important meetings?
Sean wasn't sure that he was supposed to.
He doesn't need to be here, though. I mean, anybody can use a video camera just to set it up.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Sorry, Pat, sorry, sorry. Yeah, and everything's being, everything's being recorded. I have everyone's comments, including yours, right here. Anything else on, on the company? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Erin Helly. I am not.
What is your first name?
Erin Helly.
Erin?
Yep. I am not a resident. I live on West Pine, a military spouse. I was hired by the Association of Graduate.
Oh, good.
Give them an assessment of what they have to do. Now, one thing that I just wanted to say is, based on what you guys were saying in the parking, at eight hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit with the forty-five-foot high, foot-high requirement, you can build the number of dwelling units and still have space for parking. We, as the Association of Graduate, I don't.
On the, on the property? Is that what you mean?
Based on that square footage and all those, all those restrictions, there is space for parking. You have to be very deliberate. We've spent a lot of money on architect events. But you can do it. And I would think that the expectation of anyone who's coming in to develop or rebuild they would be required to have a parking plan for their tenants, their guests, their residents. But the other thing I want to say was, from a purely black-and-white standpoint of doing the math, based on the construction costs, if you're not at eight hundred and fifty square foot per dwelling unit, there's no money to be made. So, I don't see how there's, how any growth would be possible if you're not at that square footage.
So, I have a question for you, please, if you don't mind. You said with the AOG and you were talking about Shades Building and you were working with architects?
For that corner, yes.
For that corner, yeah.
Yep.
Which is great. Do you have a draft that you could just show us how the parking layout would be?
Yes.
So, so, we have a visual, everybody has a visual, how that would actually work? You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. I mean, we're, we don't have anything finalized, but there's a couple of different options.
Yeah, and, and that's because you're definitely waiting on the stamp of approval on the square footage, for sure. But if you have a draft of the eight hundred and fifty, how you would make the parking work, and you could show that, that might go a long way. So, if we could see something like that, that would be greatly appreciated. Now, how many apartments, or, how many units would you anticipate putting above that the way it is now with eight hundred and fifty? Do you know?
Well, on the, it's a half of an acre square. So, we'd be, we'd be able to do about twenty.
Twenty, okay.
But it wouldn't all go above. We would have, there's options to, for a drive-through, sort of like an L shape, like from the Main Street over to Drew.
Okay.
There's an option to build over the road and basically have the buildings where they are now, similar to how it is now with a building behind and then a parking space in the middle.
So, not all commercial on the first floor, is that what you're saying?
Commercial on the first floor on Main Street.
Just on Main Street, but not in the back?
Not, not back because nine is the one that we own. And from what I've seen of the draft, that's not, not in the business district.
All right.
So, that was the plan, is the plan currently, waiting for a decision. But it would be literally as is with the construction, restaurant, retail on the first floor on Main Street. And then apartments above parking right behind that, and then apartments behind that.
So, you're saying one of the, so is it three parcels that you're looking at there?
Well, it's four parcels.
So, there's four. So, you wouldn't combine those parcels?
We wouldn't have to combine those parcels.
So, if you combine them, wouldn't they all be in the business district then? And then, wouldn't that require businesses on the bottom floor?
Say that one more time?
So, if you combine the lots, now you have one lot. Now, it's all in the business district, it's done.
Right.
Wouldn't businesses have to be on the first floor per the code?
I see.
It's something to look at, just digest it.
If that, if that you're saying either.
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I'm not telling you, I'm not designing for you. Your, your professionals should look at that.
You'd get better. I mean, you get, you get more, more income for retail versus restaurants.
But you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Have them, have them look at the code.
We would absolutely share those plans as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So, I have a question about that. If we're going to go eight hundred and fifty.
Can you just give, I'm sorry, Sally, can you just say your name?
Sally George.
Thank you.
If we were to go eight hundred and fifty square feet for whatever, instead of forty-five feet up high, can we lower that down to thirty so that we are in three floors? Because if you look at the, the rest of our community, our buildings are usually just about three stories high. We don't want to make monsters because then it opens it up to anyone and everyone to knock down a building or whatever and do three-story buildings, where then our village is no longer a cute, quaint village. It becomes a monster.
So, it's a little confusing the way.
So, it's a little confusing the way you're saying it, Ms. George, um, based on the eight hundred and fifty square feet? That is just in a square foot of lot area, right? So, so what you're saying is you're not comfortable with forty feet?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet? You would like to see something lower, and then that's actually gonna dictate how many units they can put on there, even if they had the square footage? Because with the design like the, uh, Erin said earlier, um, the architect's gonna figure that out. And then is it gonna be, um, economically feasible, only a three-story building? If they can only say, they're allowed twenty units, but on three stories, they're only gonna get fifteen in there. So, there's just so much clay there to work with.
Am I correct or am I wrong? Forty-five feet, that would be four stories, or five stories?
Four story.
How many stories would that be?
It depends on how they run all of their mechanical, right?
But a minimum of four.
Maybe twelve foot or?
Generally, so you're looking at twelve?
A, a minimum of four stories for forty-five feet, Sally.
Well.
Unless they're gonna make twelve-foot dealings.
Yeah, not at twelve foot, because now you got all your mechanicals that you must.
Realistically, on average, forty-five foot would equal a four-story building. That's safe to say.
Village, do we have four story, well, I almost see three, but do we have four-story buildings here?
Probably Village Hall, Town Hall, right? Roughly forty foot? What about USAA? I agree with her, I would think forty-five is the right.
You're getting closer if you say Village Hall, you're getting close if you look at the, if you look, this is not the way to do it. If you look at the peak of Hoffman's Hardware, the peak. He's got three stories, but that, he's got a tall peak there.
Yeah.
With an owl sitting up there. If you look at that, that might be.
Um, hi, Dee Bereno, Dee Bereno? Um, I think, in reference to Sally, I think what Sally was looking at was wondering if the newer buildings going up, if we know already, are they going at four feet, uh, four stories high? Which we don't know, because, um, AOG was only thinking to look at three, for example. Um, but with newer buildings going in, let's say that big empty lot, are they approved to go up the four feet? And then I think she was asking about the aesthetic of the town.
Currently, right now, as we heard before, that we should go with what the recommendation of the planning board is.
Yeah.
The planning board's recommending forty-five feet with a ten-foot kicker. So if somebody comes in and says, hey, I've got a grandiose plan to go to fifty feet, or fifty-five feet, the planning board can give them that extra ten foot. So, I'm not saying that's what we're doing, I'm just saying that's what they recommended, so.
But I thought, weren't we at the meeting, um, Pete and Jim? I think they said they wouldn't go up to five feet, especially on Main Street, like with that, five stories.
Just saying what the recommendation was. It would be how we figure out.
Cause I think they were, they wouldn't, they would say that they wouldn't do that because they wanna go along with whatever the comprehensive plan is for the aesthetic of the town. But I understand what you're saying, if it's in, if it's written in that way.
Yeah. So my, my, my point is, is it's difficult to try to figure out, when you get a recommendation, especially if you get ten recommendations on ten different items, you know, where, where the happy medium is, right? If that's what we're trying to shoot for, maybe, the happy medium, whatever that is, but, but yeah, I, and, and just.
So the stories isn't really the problem, then it's really just the square footage, is that what you guys, I came in late, so I wasn't sure.
Well, I, I, I think the, personally from my opinion, real quick, I just wanna do a quick little summary. So we've always been in a land, the tight land situation, right? We don't have a lot of, we don't have big swaths of property. So the thought was, well, if we wanted to try to add more units, or more apartments, or more residential dwellings, because that's kinda what we're talking about. You gotta, gotta go up, right? So, uh, you know, and again, what's the happy medium to go up? Is it thirty-five foot with, with an extra ten foot if a, if a, if a plan comes in? But whether we trigger at thirty-five, or forty-five, or fifty-five, when you set an eight hundred and fifty square foot for a room, or an apartment, alright? We talked about absentee landlords, we talked about, um, Airbnbs, we talked about, uh, taking homes and turning them into duplexes, or they could potentially be rentals too, just like on Klyte's Avenue. You're gonna have more. If we have, if we add another nine hundred apartments, let's say we come up with a happy, again, happy medium of fifteen hundred or twelve hundred and fifty square foot, and we, another eight hundred apartments potentially could come. How many of those are gonna be absentee landlords?
I mean, I'm just saying, like, the ones that are grandfathered in, I don't know if you've been in any of them, especially my building, they're super tiny. So I know.
I, I agree.
Orange County minimum is eight hundred, but we're saying eight fifty.
No, 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 no.
No.
That's where you're.
Or, or, I'm just saying, if we're gonna go as low as, let's say, eight fifty, at least the buildings that are already there with a smaller square feet, you know, if they ever get knocked down and built back up, they'll, they'll, those apartments thankfully will be a little bit more spacious.
Yeah, but.
So.
But now, hold on a second, Jim.
You got it?
But, but, but now, if that building gets knocked down, it potentially could go to forty-five feet.
You're, you're ruining. Well, just one more, one more story, right? Cause some, some of the buildings in town have, like you said, those.
I don't, I don't know particularly what building you're talking about.
Yeah.
But again, depending on how they wanna structure it. And right now, we're at forty-five with a ten-foot, you know, which we kinda hear may not, might not be the best way. But if you have a fifty-five foot building, and you could put five floors on it.
But I don't think that's a part of the Main Street, I thought when I read the plans.
You have, you have four or five properties right now that have just been purchased, that if we went to eight hundred and fifty square foot, and fifty-five, fifty-five foot high, there's a potential there to put many, many, many units.
That's the people who bought the, the property, when they present their plans to the planning board, and the planning board is utilizing the village comprehensive plan.
No.
When they.
They're using the code.
They're using the current code.
And, and just.
The recommendations from the planning, uh, the recommendations from the planning board.
Sure.
As far as aesthetics and everything. I mean, I don't see how a planning board would say, you know what, this is the aesthetic the town finally agrees on, but will go out of their way to, to make a five-foot tall building be available, when I, yeah, I'm just saying, like, that's why we work with the town, right? The planning board and the zoning board, to keep that kind of happy, like you said, the happy medium.
I, 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 I don't disagree with you, but.
You know what I mean, there's two ways you lock.
But once you have a code and it's in.
Yeah.
And it's allowed, uh, and we set, let's say we set for eight fifty and fifty-five, fifty-five foot high, they can't stop.
You're increasing it to fifty-five.
Right now, the.
Or is that what you want?
Right now, the suggestion from the planning board is to go to forty-five feet, and if the planning board seems fit, add another ten foot.
Cause right now, currently, it's at forty.
I think, I think, I think currently it's, might be at forty-five or thirty-five, I'm not sure what the code is, right now, the code right now.
Yeah, cause I thought it was at four stories on Main Street, and if you're set back away from Main Street, it's up to five stories, which I don't know if that's a fifty-five.
For the hotel, when they were built, they, the way they were building.
Or anything on Main Street, they get built, yeah. Well, when I was talking to the guys, I wanted to make sure, like, I understood a little bit. That's why I was wondering.
So, so Ms.?
There's a lot to take in, is my point.
You said the apartments that are in the building now are tiny, right?
Yeah, the buildings we have right now on Main Street.
No, no, and the apartments in that building that you were just talking about are tiny, are, are tiny, right?
Yeah.
So with that being said, um, the eight hundred and fifty has nothing to do with the size of that apartment?
No, no, I understand.
But you, you were like, that's tiny, so.
My, my thing is, and maybe the public doesn't know, the buildings that are grandfathered in, because at a different time when these buildings were built, they're all either at the Orange County standard of eight hundred square feet, or even smaller. That's what I'm saying, so that people in town, let's say for example, look at the park building. If somebody comes in to re, let's say we're gonna bulldozer park and rebuild it, the same height, everything, we bought it with four apartments, but guess what, now the new laws, we can't put back in four apartments. What I'm saying is people in town, I think, need to understand that the part, the buildings we have are, are grandfathered in, are smaller.
So we, we, I, I actually brought that up at the last meeting. And, and part of the comp plan will be any building on Main Street.
Yes.
Any building, any current building that's structured that's there now, if they, if someone purchased it and wants to say, hey, you know what? To rehab, it's gonna cost ten million dollars, but if we knock it down and put a brand-new building up, it's gonna cost four. The grandfather clause would kick in and say you can put it back at least as a minimum, what you had before.
But that's not in.
No, that's what we talk about to add through the process.
And I gotta verbatim what he wrote here, so the grandfather clause, all existing buildings, if demolished or substantially demolished, for improvement by the owner of the parcel, may put back at a minimum what was previously there, even if it doesn't meet the zoning requirements. This is something that, you know, like, we have a whole list of things that we're up here battling back and forth, but I think that answers your question about the grandfather.
Yeah, that, that would should be.
So that's not voted and approved yet, but that's on the.
It's, I think, I think.
It's on the table, and it's, it's a great, I, I, I think it's.
It's on the list to, to add in when we do decide to approve the whole plan together, but it is, we did talk about it at a meeting, it did pass the phase, and it'll be in the plan, and then we'll, we'll talk about it when we go to approve it. But yeah, that's something.
So how many more meetings do you have before you guys, um, have like that important, you know, moving meetings?
Oof.
We don't know, Sally, pardon you. I'm trying to wrap it up.
You know, I'm just curious, for like, um, like, for example, for if, like, I know the empty lot, is he just waiting his time until something's approved and then starts building?
Oh, you mean for the hotel lot?
No.
No.
No, no, that's not what, that's not what.
No, no, I'm just saying for anybody who says, I wanna wait my time and see the changes happen that are gonna be more beneficial to me than I'm feeling right now, I'll wait till this is done.
The only builder that I am aware of, other than, uh, who has actually submitted a plan to the planning board and then went to the zoning board, was for the parcel in between, I think, your store and, uh, Ward and Garvey. I think that's the only, I'm not saying there's not conceptual ideas or plans out there, but the only builder that I know that has submitted a plan and went to planning zoning is that parcel right there, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Sally?
So, the only thing that I'm thinking left, who knows, um, on this subject, is, um, I don't know if you've been down to Nyack, to see all the building that they've done down there? It has completely ruined that community, alright? I don't want to see that here. I don't wanna see these four- or five-story buildings, it's gonna completely ruin the, the, the entire village, but also put in the mass density that we're talking about. Cause we're talking about a lot of people that's gonna come in if we go for five stories. So if we could keep it at thirty-five and then whatever, or ten, that would be better then, cause then you're opening, sorry, I didn't mean to put my hand right in your face. Um, then, are you telling me this came out, sorry? Then you're opening it up for the, the hotel next door to go up five or six stories, if that ever happens.
Well, they're.
They're approved at fifty-five.
They're, they have a conditional.
It's been approved.
Ms. George, they, they have a conditional approval, so whatever, mm, we change now, they're grandfathered in, I believe, with their conditional approval?
I can't answer that, that depends.
So.
It may have lapsed.
It depends, and, and if they have not went for extensions on their plan, then they may lose all of the approvals that they already have, so.
Cause he is back, he's already started planning to do stuff with the, the church, he is back.
Well, the church is something different than what you were talking about over here. Again, um, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where in the planning process the church is, if he has total approval for it? That's a planning board member?
That I already want.
Um, or the planning board could answer that for you?
Yeah, he's got, there's structural issues with what he wants to do.
Yeah.
Okay, Pat?
Um, the builders that are coming in, we seem to have a good number of people that would like to make changes to our Main Street and community. My question is, what is the board doing to make sure, as Sally brought up, we're either maintaining the aesthetics, or, better yet, if we're moving forward, we actually come up with a theme for some kind of a good-looking, full Main Street? And make sure before these builders bypass all kinds of numbers that could be coming to the village, like, of course we'll approve of this, if you take down the power lines. Of course we'll approve you to that, but you're gonna need that, like the hotel that never showed up on, or motel, that never showed up on NW, they had certain things they had to do, that we made them do for the good of the village. Why are, are we looking at, as trustee Carol pointed out, the water and sewer? Are we gonna make or ask these builders to invest in our infrastructure?
To get, they liked it.
So that it can handle the new pieces that are coming into our Main Street? And that means, to me, that's not their discussion, that's, they're trying to make the best dollar they can. That's the board's discussion, representing us as the people of the community, getting us the best bang for our dollar. And that's, if, if all these builders have so much money, and they're gonna help us out so much, and we're so thankful, they need to start investing in our infrastructure, and that's gonna be on you guys to make that happen. Nobody else is gonna jump up and say, I'll give you an extra million, I'll give you an extra five hundred thousand. We have to start putting some things onto all these people coming in that are making a ton of money off of our village, turning it into one giant Airbnb.
So, so, so Pat, I'm, I'm not sure if you were here, but we, we touched on a couple of things he was talking about there. And unfortunately, in the code, we can't require a developer to do something off their site. Now, mm, if they do it, thank you, you're a great neighbor, you know what I mean? You're coming in, but I don't think we can legally.
I, I don't think we should make that statement until we've given a little ride down the road. One, code, don't act like the code dictates us, you dictate the code. You can change the code as is, some's grandfathered in, some's not.
He doesn't.
You guys have a lot more power than you are exercising. And I've seen that done, so don't automatically say, ah, I'm not sure we can have it. How about the answer be, that's interesting, let's look into it?
Well.
Great.
Hold on a second, Jim, Jim, can you hold on a second?
That's great, Mr. Flynn, so if you've seen it done, could you possibly get some code that you've seen where they require the developer to do infrastructure off their site?
I have, I have, I've seen it where the board has worked, worked with the builder. So it didn't take them six years to get a six-week project done. They worked with the builder, helped them speed up the process. But during that process, the builders helped the community.
Yeah, please.
That's what I see, partnership.
Yeah.
And I've seen it. So if you like, I will, I will look for that. That was done years ago, and I will look for, not here, but years ago. And maybe you can't, but can you at least try?
We, so just real quick, um, uh, we, we brought this up, um, actually I think I brought it up at the last, um, I don't know if, I think it was a workshop on the comp, I don't know if it was a public hearing, but I brought forward, um, a project that they did in the village of Osning, uh, for incentivized, I think it was called incentivized zoning, uh, or incentivized zones. And, um, it's a, it's something that a few places do do in New York State. It, uh, it, it has the, it did state in the, in the literature, literature, um, which I have, and I'll, I'll, I'll make a copy and put it in everybody's box, um, that there is a poten, high potential for pitfalls, um, or, um, you know, uh, some things not happening, uh, you know, above, above the table, or on, you know, appropriately, it, it leads to avenues where that potentially could happen, or at least, uh, creates an environment. Um, and I think, as it was stated by the attorney, um, you know, if, if, an example that trustee Carol had brought up regarding, let's say, the hotel. So if the hotel gets built, and they say, you know, we need to have a sixteen-inch sewer line that needs to take the sewer. And, uh, we know that from point A to point B, it's twelve inch, but we know when it gets to point C, it's sixteen inch. They may say, hey, we know that you have a twelve-inch line here, and we're building this hotel, we know we're gonna add X amount of sewage into the, into the main, so we understand that you would have to put out this expense, it's an expense that would be borne by every, everybody in the sewer district, or in our case, the village. So we will, we'll fix this one section so that the whole section's sixteen inches. That's something that probably would work, in that scenario. Similar to the drainage project that was brought forth by the planning board at the time for the project on the hill that never took place. But they did do the, I think it was, uh, three fifty, four fifty, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of drainage, uh, that they were going to add to the system because of how they were gonna build the hotel and create, you know, less absorbing surface area, I don't know the technical term. So it, it's not a bad idea, it's something that has been done, I think we do look at it. So, it, it's not a bad idea, it's something that has been done, I think we do look at it. Um, but, um, legality-wise, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a, it could be touch and go.
You can make them do it if they need to have it done.
Right, right.
Did you say something about connecting two buildings together?
Combining the lots.
Combining lots, and then potentially building over, or-
Disaster, sounds like a disaster.
Oh, you mean-
Okay, I want, I'd like to, need to start the next meeting, is there any, yes, yes. Go ahead.
Alina Olivia, I just have a few comments. Um, there's been quite a lot of discussion about these, the square footage of the, um, buildings and the, uh, units within them, and the height requirements of, you know, what's being bounced around, and it's kind of what you want, what you want, what you wanna see. Um, is there not an actual algorithm for this kind of information based off of our population, our actual square footage, uh, the size of our existing lots, I mean?
What do you wanna know?
Is there an actual algorithm that would produce these numbers that we're asking for instead of just guessing or asking the public's opinion?
So I have some numbers that have been done, just so you know. So in the Village Business District, the old B1, there is a hundred and thirty-three parcels. The acreage is twenty-eight point seven, not, seven-four acres of land on those. Um, the average parcel size in that business district is only point-two-two acres, which is nine thousand square feet, a little over. Smallest parcel is point-zero-one, which, I don't know where that is, but it's small. Um, and the largest parcel size is two-point-three-nine acres. So this was in the old B1, so I, I have this not only for the R1, the R2, R3, R4, uh, B1, B2, I have all of that, and I can give you any information that you're looking for on that, alright?
Well, I don't know how to produce the algorithm for it, I'm asking if there is one. If you have the information of what all of our specifications are, and is there not some sort of system that we can put all of our information into that would give us accurate measurements of what our space can hold, what our community can hold, what our infrastructure can hold?
As far as the infrastructure, that's a tough one, because until you max everything out, you won't know, uh, the total infrastructure that you'll need. And that's why I always go back to, um, when the lower we go, uh, how much water we're gonna need for that, and then the sewer capacity, et cetera, et cetera. And then we have to also realize, is this board, because we run the, uh, Water Department, and we give to, uh, Fort Montgomery, our neighbors, uh, we give them X amount, right? So, and they wanna build down there too, and our plant can only produce so much water. So, we have to take all of those into account as well. It's not only just the village, but, you know, we're supplying water down there as well, so, mm-
Right, so all of those things would be factored in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, moving on, the comment about the Fire Department, um, whether they could actually reach the heights of people that we have, I think that's really logical way of thinking about things, so I would agree with that comment. Um, I also would very much agree that with any building going on in the village, I think it's very important to figure out the right way to keep the charm that we have here, because whether we get more, um, more community, more people into our village, and businesses are not, um, the charm that we have is a draw-in, and that is a main focus. And I just wanted to touch a little bit, there are a lot more things in this comprehensive plan than just the zoning and building size and all these things that we've been discussing, which, those have been the main focus on the last several minutes about the comprehensive plan. But there are things in there, um, about, um, property that the village owns that's going to be sold, property that's going to be transferred to the, uh, town, and there's just a lot of information in here that I'm not sure where exactly this is applying to an overall plan. And, um, there's a lot of information in there, I think, that has not actually been updated. The buildings that are listed for sale, not for sale, there's been a lot of movement since this was actually drawn up.
Yeah.
So I think that an actual updated plan with accurate information would be important for the residents. And a question, the waterfront, um, project, is that directly correlated with the comprehensive plan? Or is that like two separate things, or?
I, the waterfront cement is part of the comp plan.
To revitalization?
You mean the marina? It's mentioned in there. I, I had something else that I haven't seen in here yet, and unfortunately, I'm sure everybody's heard me beat it to death, about an overlay district that would possibly also bring, mm, radials in. But, mm, hopefully, once everybody looks at it one more time, maybe we can get that in.
And I just wanted to say about the traffic flow, cause I think the traffic flow design plan that was in place, I believe is in the Water District, um, booklet, I'm not sure if it's in the comprehensive plan or not, um, so if this is inappropriate to this meeting statement, I just wanna say that with, um, the idea of moving the flow in one way, uh, West Point Highway being one direction, and Main Street being one direction, I, I understand the allure of that project, and I see that it would be beneficial for tourism purposes, but I feel the need to at least have it stated that I think it would be a significant disruption to residents.
Everyday life?
Yes.
Quick, yes.
I'm sorry, your name, sir, I'm sorry, just, just your-
Jill, did you say that there was a thousand, that there was potentially a thousand more bedrooms?
Depends which number we're going with. Pardon? At eight-fifty, and only in the previous layout that we had for the Business District. Um, at eight-fifty, that would've gave us another two-hundred-and-seventy-five possible units, okay? Which, uh, could, at four bedrooms per unit, would turn into one-thousand-ninety-eight bedrooms. That's at four-bedroom units. Now, I mean, you can go down the list, if it, if it was, uh, you know, gonna be, um, two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units, you know, uh, that number is gonna change. So, a- and again, we're, we can't dictate what size bedroom people, units that people are gonna do, you know what I mean? That's the developer, they see the need for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, God bless them, that's up to them. Um, but I'm just giving you a four-bedroom count for now, but I have all the other ones as well.
If you look around the neighborhood, you use, when you have this, this, this is a classic, eight-hundred-and-fifty square meters, a classic apartment-sized unit. And that tends to attract low-end rentals, especially when you're looking at it for profit, sort of, and it's always an absentee landlord, that's a problem with all of them, and they're putting a manager in, and they're running the units. You don't have the quality of attention that you have for homeowner, properties that you have that, which is more than ten, the nature of this town. I heard one of your board members a few meetings ago say that fifty percent of the owners of this town are absentee landlords. I don't know how accurate that is.
Well, it's actually, it's in, it's in compliance, so go on.
But, at that number of bedrooms, my question is, have, have you, how many students that adds to the school system? And what is the capacity of the school system?
Exactly.
Typically, uh, if you're, okay, two children per household, on average for the nation, maybe one point eight. What is the capacity of the school system to handle that level of infrastructure? Cause some of the, some of the school systems in the area have really been stretched for their, their student capacity. And this, this school system, I don't, you had the board here-
No different.
-with a budget a couple weeks ago, and they're talking, you have nine-hundred-and-fifty students.
Five-hundred and fifty.
So you add three-hundred students, and I think you're way over capacity, just to create that one student per household, per new apartment. I think that's a major consideration, and how many, how you attend to the, the number of students that are potentially gonna impact the school system.
Right, and, and, you're absolutely correct, and think about this, cause I know there's some other municipalities that I do work in, and they thought about, um, the multifamily units that they were putting in. So with that being said, uh, say we have these four-bedroom units, right? In today's world, everybody has a car in each bedroom.
Everybody?
Everybody has a car in each bedroom. Think about that, you know what I mean, more or less nowadays? And if we're only gonna require, say, one space per unit, because you don't, you don't wanna take up the whole lot either, you know what I mean? So where all the other cars gonna park? So those are things that, again, you really need to, to think about. But, just so everybody knows, you know, it was, keeps strolling out there about AOG, AOG, this is not geared towards AOG, this is geared towards the whole, the village as a whole, and many developers. We're not gearing it to just one person, or one entity.
I understand, but as you were saying, as you were saying before, if a developer wants to develop in compliance with the code, the community has the responsibility to provide the infrastructure for that development. And also has the responsibility to provide an education system to support that development.
Right.
And when you have to build another school, you're talking about not a, a few thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for a sewer line. You're talking about millions of dollars, even state aid, and the state aid is dropping back dramatically. They cut it back next year, they're gonna cut it back again. I mean, I think it's a really good, big consideration on how, how you structure this plan, and how it's gonna impact the number of units. And then you have the other question of, what is the, what is the, the real intent of expanding the number of units in the town? Does that enhance the quality of life in this town? Because everybody wants, this whole idea of growth, what is the benefit of growth? Talking about supporting the merchants in town? Do three-hundred families really support the, the merchants in town? Are they gonna shop in town, when the merchants already aren't benefiting that much from the residents? Because they still drive over the mountain to shop, you know?
Great, great points, so, so, in the, in the comprehensive plan, page ninety-eight, just, just, real quick, uh, talks about a strong sense of community, alright? Uh, neighborhoods that we have now. Um, you could go also to page one-hundred, talks about adaptive reuse of buildings that are here now. Um, and that has to go with green infrastructure. Um, so there's a lot in here. Um, if you sit down and go through some of the pages, uh, there's a lot of meat in here that we can, we should be utilizing.
Jim?
No, I just, real quick, I, I think you hit on a pretty valid point, right? So we've always talked about, even in this room, right? There's some great suggestions, there's some great, uh, input, but, you know, if you broke them all out, everybody wants a little something different. So we're trying to marry it the best way we possibly can, again, happy medium. But, to your point, just like we always say, what about another two-hundred? So take these numbers, let's say a thousand units, or doors, or whatever, take a third of them. Two-hundred-and-fifty cars on, added to the area, two-hundred-and-fifty kids added to the area. I mean, we had a, a presentation from the school, just like the town board did. There's a budget vote tomorrow, thirty-nine million dollar school budget. I'm not saying what, which way to vote, you vote however you want, but if we add, if we turned around and said, "Hey, school, we're adding two-hundred, two-hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty, two-fifty kids to your school system," with, so when we say the word "infrastructure," it's not just sewer pipe, it's not just water pipe, it's more plows, it's more cop cars, it's more police, it's more fire personnel, it's more, it's more everything.
But this is, this is the impact of the whole-
Correct.
-infrastructure, where everybody already complains about property taxes and school taxes.
Correct. Sure, you're at the meetings, you hear.
But you also have the quality of education.
Sure.
You overload the school system, because you can't afford to build it. You can't approve a school budget to build the additional space for the students. That impacts the quality of education for the students, and that impacts the desire to live here, because if you allow it in the education system, people don't wanna live here anyway.
I get it, so, and, and-
Last point I wanna make to you, incentivized zoning.
Yeah.
Terrifying.
Yep, that's, that's what was the consensus, I just, I brought it up because it-
Arrow talked about parking capacity, parking development.
Yep.
Maybe you can develop underground parking under the building they want, but if you have incentivized, they're gonna want the town to put ugly, two-story parking garages in our municipal parking lot.
Yeah, it, it-
That would ruin the quality of the Main Street.
It worked for a couple different areas, I happened to just catch it, I brought it, we, we talked about it, and it kinda got, I wanna say for a better word, kibosh, and that's fine, I was, I don't have any skin in the game in that regard.
I would totally agree with what she said about Nyack, they've ruined Nyack.
Oh, it's, it's crazy.
And it looks like a dog now.
So.
Alright, let me, um- Keep, it won't keep it open, right?
Motion to keep the public hearing.
Just, as far as the background public, the number of two-hundred-and-seventy-four new units, assessed at two-hundred thousand, four percent tax rate, brings in two million dollars per year in tax revenue.
Residential development does not pay for itself, ever.
And that's how we can make all the infrastructure better and help the schools.
Did you correct, did you agree with that?
Yeah, I just, uh, just real quick to add to that, I mean, the, the dollar-for-dollar residential to, to commercial is not the same. So, uh, you know, commer- more commercial, uh, building or, um, investment brings back much more than it costs the municipality. Again, it's, we're looking for a happy medium, so we wanna try to get more commercial and a little more residential, and try to marry everything together.
Yes. I moved up here twenty years ago, living in Fort Montgomery. And I've been coming up here for sixty-five years, and the town hasn't changed in sixty-five years, the minute. But change now is parks is gone, and, uh, you know, the restaurant is gone. I don't know, you go look at Beacon, Beacon has shortchanged their place in twenty-five years. They brought in good residents, high-end stuff, and that's what changed the town. I'd like to see something change. I probably won't see it in my town, I'll tell you the truth. But it's a quaint little town, I like it here, but, uh, you gotta bring somebody in here to make it happen.
We're never gonna get to the regular meeting, we're never gonna get to the regular meeting.
Phil, can I make one, one moment? Uh, it'll be fast. Listen, uh, a lot of suggestions, you're not writing the Bible that we're gonna have to live with forever and ever. You're writing something that we're, that you want to make some, some, some changes that are good for the community, and, and, uh, that, that'll last for five, five years. If nothing's happening in the way of development, then you loosen it up and you make more, for more, loosen up the code, so you can have-
Things in the, you're, you're absolutely, things in the comp plan, once it's adopted, I don't want this to happen, but a month from then, you can make a change in that comp plan.
There's a potential.
Yeah, there's, I don't wanna do it, that's too soon. Okay, I wanna take, keep the public hearing open.
I need a motion to continue the public hearing.
A motion to, to keep this open and continuing, at a future date, soon.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
And I just wanna thank everybody in all of, everything that you guys have, all your ideas.
Go right into them.
I love them, I wanna hear them all, and I have some other ones that I wanna, some of the people, see me after the meeting, about the businesses.
Okay.
You need a motion to go into the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Or, Bob, Bill's workshop meeting?
I need a motion to close the public hearing.
No, 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 we just didn't-
A motion to open the workshop.
Of the workshop, okay.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, so this is our workshop. So there are some agenda items, and I have a couple things, and if anyone wants to talk here, the table wants to, anything else. Okay, so first on the agenda is the chemical bids, you have that before you. These are mostly for the water plant, a couple for the sewer plant. I want you to change one, number G, it says lime. Uh, coin is the low bidder, and just, the red, the circle to the right was slack, they were not the low bidder. But everyone else is the low bidder, that was a mistake. So you're, and number G, where it says lime, we're gonna go with coin, and we're gonna cross this one out, cross number-
And, and just so the board and the, for the minutes, section D and section E have two different categories. One's a hundred-and-fifty-pound container, and one's a two-thousand-pound container, and one's a five-gallon container, and one's a fifteen-gallon container, and indeed, anyway, there's two, there's, um, there's two different ones, so.
So could I have a motion to accept the low bidders? And, uh, this was gone over today with John Jones and VRI from the water plant, I had them down to your- with John Jones and V R R I from the water plant. I had them down the office.
So moved.
These are their recommendations. Motion by Jim. Is there a second? Second by Pete? All in favor?
Yes.
opposed? Okay, we have three members. I think we can do them all at once. Three members to the fire department that are being recommended by Eric Smith. They have all their paperwork in except pending the completion of their physical. So even though we'll vote them in tonight, they cannot serve until their physicals are done. So you have George Moreno. He's actually from West Point. There's a Stoney Lowson. We have a fellow on Old State Road, Joe Rogers. And the third one being recommended is Emmanuel Rogers, and he's on Old State Road. Same place. So these two fellows live in the same, in the same address?
I believe they're related.
Same last name.
Yeah, I believe they're related. I, I make a motion. We approve the three new folks for membership pending, pending their specific requirements outlined by the chief are fulfilled.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi. The Rogers is, they're, they're employed by the F D N Y, too. Great addition.
I believe so, yeah.
Next on the agenda is, we have a request from John Jones, the sewer plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator, that John Walter, who works down there now, attends basic wastewater operations class in Buffalo State University from the twenty-second of July through the second of August. And he also attends the basic lavatory course in Buffalo State University from August twelfth through the sixteenth of August. Courses and books are eighteen hundred and thirty dollars. Then there's plus lodging, meals, and mileage. That comes from John.
Well, the staff down there isn't getting any younger.
No, this, it actually, I wait for somebody to say it has to be
And, and this is somebody that has been with the village in different capacities already.
Is that a motion?
He's learned a lot in the D P W.
Is that a motion?
I make the motion, sir.
I'll second it.
Good.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
All right, opposed? All right, that'll be good, and that'll show him we see that he has the potential and
Climbing the ladder.
You've talked to him. Okay. I have a letter here from the Teamsters, local union four forty-five, that represents the highway, water, and sewer employees. Not the supervisors, just the employees. And they're, they're, what did I say? Severing ties with the
Yeah, that's it.
With the, with the local, with, four forty-five is severing their ties with this, these fellows down here. And so this'll get, yes, absolutely. That'll be, uh
Just, you just want a motion to accept the letter?
I guess. I mean, it, what if we don't?
It's on the record.
Okay, so it's been received, so you're F Y I.
Okay.
Oh, wow. Does your labor attorney have a copy?
Yeah. All this paperwork will change it tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And maybe we'll call you.
Okay.
Next, I have a letter from the, uh, fellas at the highway, water, and sewer. Again, not the, not the supervisors. As of April two, twenty twenty-four, the Department of Public Work Employees Association is no longer affiliated with the Teamsters Local Four Forty-Five. You just accept that, correct?
Can I just see that letter?
The second one?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I would like to have approved the Memorial Day observation at Memorial Park this weekend, the twenty-seventh of May, starting at ten A M. It, starting at ten A M. So they're planning a ceremony. They haven't, they have, uh, we have received insurance for the, for the event. So everything, and, and an event form. So everything's done according to the rules.
So moved.
Is there a second to accept the event form and the insurance for this affair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Some good news, um, so
You got more? Special meeting.
Special meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it's right there, special meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I don't have it.
Oh, okay.
I actually don't have it. Okay, so we need to have a special me, yes, I know about this. It's not on my agenda for some reason. We, we need to have a special meeting. We do this every year. We do it at the end of our fiscal year, which is the very, very end of May. June one coming starts our new budget. So we always have a, uh, end of the fiscal year meeting. It's very quick. It's to pay the final bills for this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So it'll be at nine A M. We'll be out of there. I don't know why we won't be out of there, five after nine.
Motion.
And it'll be at Village Hall.
I make a motion.
Okay, just wondering if I won't be here.
So moved.
Is there a second? And that's, what, what did I say, the twenty-eighth at nine A M?
Yes.
Okay, pay bills. We do it each year. Okay, sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just a couple more things. FEMA, the damage from the flood. So far, the village has submitted three million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. We have received, it's a process of ten to twelve weeks, one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We also have received one thousand dollars from our insurance company.
One million.
One, what did I say, one thou?
Yeah, one million.
I'm sorry, one million.
That's a big difference.
Damn. And, uh, one million, and, um, this next amount is obligated, and I'm told when it's obligated, it's like the checks in the mail. Six hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. So I'll just make some sense out of this. We still have a long way to go. But we have received three million, three hundred and ninety thousand against three million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. And that's about right, because we have to pick up twelve and a half percent. So that, those numbers are about correct. So it's good news that the money starts coming in, because we take that money and, and we put it towards another project. Instead of borrowing twenty million, we didn't wanna do that. You could do it this way. There's probably three ways you could do it. We're using money, we borrowed a little, got us going, it's coming back. We're taking that money that's coming back, the eighty-seven percent, and applying it to the next job, to the next job, to the next job. So
With that in
What's that?
You said you do it different ways. So do you, oh, you wait?
Yeah, yeah, we'll wait till the, we'll wait till the end, but, because it, it, the ban acts like a, the easiest way to, to, to make an example would be, it acts like a home equity line of credit. So we keep, we can keep, it allows us to fluctuate back and forth in our capital fund.
That's what I wanted to find out. And this one I'd like to hear.
Okay. All right, coming up, the New York Forward, that's the four million, five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, there's a meeting, June one, here, at nine o'clock. For business owners. I'm handing out flyers, and hopefully we get a number of them come that are interested in doing either facade work or maybe something inside their building. Some things.
Keep going, just keep going.
Okay, at ten thirty, there'll be a public hearing, public meeting, not hearing, public meeting here, after the businesses leave at ten thirty, that anyone is welcome to come to. And then later on in that day, there'll be at the Community Day at Road Park. Lot of meetings with this, a tremendous amount, actually. Um, so that's that. Uh, I just wanna read this. On behalf of the Honefloss Police Department, is, I am very pleased to announce that the Village of Honefloss Department has been awarded a law enforcement technology grant from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is over and above, two meetings ago, I read
Other fifty.
Three grants that they had gotten, received. And this is another one. The grant will, the grant, the grant will be used to purchase equipment that is technology-related, including but not limited to computer equipment, cameras, license plate readers, software equipment, on and on and on. So, um, in the last six months, Honefloss Police Department has secured twenty-five thousand dollars for a speed trailer, eighteen thousand dollars for arrest booking equipment, and five thousand dollars for body armor replacement, which is so important. So they continue to do, not only do good work, but get us grant money, that more than likely, most if not all, we would have to buy, anyway. Um, I'm open to anything you wanna bring up to me.
Um, I, I just wanna add about the FEMA, because, you know, while we're doing it, the way we're doing it, which is different from the town, it's a little more work for the folks at Village Hall, but doesn't mean we're not moving forward with a bunch of projects. Most specifically, we had a meeting here, was it a couple weeks ago? The mayor had a meeting here with the folks on Murns Avenue, because the next, um, I wanna say, three bigger projects that, that are not water sewer plants, is the Road Park area, which we are referring to, the Little League, Little League area, Murns Avenue, which is a huge drainage project for that, basically the whole south end. Am I saying that right? And then, um, the portions of Saddle Lee. So, um, those three big projects, and they have to kinda be done in a certain way, meaning we actually have to do the drainage portion by the Little League field first, then Murns. Anyway, the engineer, the treasurer, worked with FEMA, and we actually got those funds, I think today, to, to work forward with it.
Yeah, what, so this is a meeting for the board, but you can't help, we need to talk to everyone. But you're right. FEMA, can I say eight hundred?
Seven seventy-two.
Okay, FEMA has authorized seven hundred, I'll be corrected on the number by a little bit. Seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for, for Little League. And they're doing it different. We lobbied them, we had meetings about it here in this room. Some were Zoom, to give us that upfront. Not us pay for it and wait twelve weeks to get it back. So they, we were able to achieve that, which is a good thing.
It's huge.
It's big.
Yeah, so, so that seven seventy-two will go towards that massive drainage issue back there.
Yeah.
Uh, which basically comes from nine W, Murns, to there, and to the lake. So that, and then the field, and then, and then we turn our, it's all gonna be, I think, pretty close to simultaneously for Little League, the drainage, and Murns at the same time, and then Saddle Lee will gear up after that, but
Saddle Lee Grove we're doing.
Is some of, is some of that money also going to go towards the dredging?
No, I was just gonna say, the dredging, then
At the end, then.
Something odd with FEMA, I find it odd. If you go down to the south end by the Little League field and look north at the pond, they're, they're
I'll give it to you. There's a big delta out there.
They're, they're, they're giving us, they're draining, they're allowing us to drain half of the pond.
Dredge, yeah. So
I don't get that, but that's not part of the seven seventy-two.
I think what we're trying to do is make a, make a, make the, showing the data and the situational issue at Lake now, which has basically become a huge retention pond.
Right, I was gonna say, 'cause we lost capacity.
Correct. So the engineer's making a valid argument to say, just doing half of it's not gonna help, oops, sorry, not gonna help us. So we're looking to try to do three-quarters of the lake or all the lake.
I'll talk to you.
Yeah, well, obviously, there's environmental issues there, but
Yes.
We'll deal with them on as best we can.
The C is on top of it, too, so.
You guys have anything for me? You don't have to.
You really want me to go to my file now?
No.
I didn't think so.
Mention efficient.
Everything's going well with the fishing derby.
Okay.
I'm getting, I'm getting the required quotes.
What's the date?
It's June eighth.
That's Lady Cliff reunion.
It's every year. Last, last time you said you couldn't make it, because you were going there.
Fishing.
But actually, you were there early.
Yeah, it was all day.
You, you came early for the donuts. But anyway, um, so I'm getting the quotes that we need. Uh, and people have already stepped up like they did last year, the same people, that are gonna give us some donations as well, which is great. And that's where we are. It should be a great event. You know, um, just wanna make sure that we have use of the pavilion that morning.
Absolutely.
Because while last year, there was a little, hmm, overlap, I should say.
Conflict.
Yeah, so somebody was setting up there, but they worked with us. But unfortunately, their party started at noon, and we were done like maybe ten after, so that wasn't the problem. The problem was, somebody else had booked it as well, so that those two parties had, had a conflict. But we, we worked ours out, and I don't anticipate us having a problem this year.
Oh, last thing about Road Park. I will be bringing something to the board in regards to dealing with the geese over in that park. I had the wonderful pleasure of taking my five-year-old son there Sunday, and, uh, his job was to count how many pieces of goose dropping. He felt it necessary to give me a total, so, God bless him at five. So
Are you bringing the, are you solving the problem, or just bringing us the
Oh, no, we're gonna solve the problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
You bringing in number two?
Yeah, I'll bring in a total two.
Alicia, have anything for us?
No.
Will you be around in your office still?
I will.
And then you have an executive session?
We have executive session.
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to it, Jim. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank everybody for coming. Thank you, everyone.